Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education regular meeting for Wednesday, March 6th, 2019. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Would you please call the roll?
Carolyn?
Here.
Eliason? Evans?
Here.
Garner?
Here.
Olsted?
Here.
Teshel?
Here.
Thank you very much. At this time, we are going to call on a Carl Trager Middle School student. Kelso Collins is here tonight to lead us in the pledge, so we'll welcome him up to the front.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We like to have students at our meetings because that's the reason we're here, for our students. So Kelso, a pleasure meeting you tonight, and appreciate that you're taking time out of your schedule to be here. Thanks for coming. With that, we'll move on to board and administrative reports, starting with the board president report tonight. I continue to be so impressed with the way our students are covered in the media, whether that's the news media, the print media, or the oral media, namely TV and radios, and also in their school news letters. I know that recently there was a display of artwork put up in the Oshkosh Public Library for the Helen Farnsworth Mirrors Annual Contest. And last Saturday, which was the first Saturday of the month, there were two sites in downtown Oshkosh that featured artwork of Oshkosh Area School District students. So congratulations to all the students and to their teachers who support them and their families who support them as well. Last week was Read Across America in the United States, largely to help celebrate the anniversary of the birthday of the author popularly known as Dr. Seuss. And I want to give a shout out to two Oaklawn 5th grade classrooms that invited me to come and share with them. It was a delight to be out there and see what was really going on in the schools. And the students were very well behaved, and so I had a good time. So thank you to our teachers who organized those events across our schools last week. And with that, I'll turn this over to the superintendent for her report.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
So I don't want to delay on this whatsoever, but I wanted to go ahead and start with Michaela for an update.
So I'm from West, and this is our March update. So to start off with sports, we are coming to the end of our basketball season and our gymnastics season. Both teams did a great job, and with all the injuries on the basketball team this season, they really pulled through and did a great job. More on sports, the track season is coming up. These are some pictures from last year. They had a lot of fun last year, and I, having spoken to a lot of the athletes, they are all looking forward to the beginning of the season. Looking more at the music department, the music department is currently working on the Spring Musical. The Drowsy Chaperone, members of the choir, band, and orchestra are all involved in the cast, and therefore it brings together all the students at West, and I feel that this is really going to be a great performance by all of them. Also, the Solon Ensemble was very successful for many students, as they are sending dozens of the members of the band and orchestra to UWO for the state conference in order to compete there. More on clubs, the Rotary Department, they have been getting really involved in the community lately, as they have gone to many conferences and spoken with many businesses in regards to how the school can get more involved and how students can really immerse themselves within the community. The Oshkosh West Index is always working, and our next production is going to be next week, so we are always looking for more stories and more people to get involved with that. And then AP courses, we are in full AP season, as study sessions and many students are beginning to really buckle down on getting ready for those big tests coming in May. More on clubs, on the right is the state conference for DECA. We were there on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. We actually got back about an hour ago. So everyone did very well, the five of us. There are three of us going to ICDC, which is the International Conference in May, so it was very exciting. And then on the left is mock trials. State for mock trials is going to be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so it's going to be very exciting to see how we do there. More miscellaneous, but also on sports, these two students, Breka Betra and Thomas Hendricks, were both featured in the most recent SBA Conference recognition, so that was pretty exciting for them. And then our student government recently went to a leadership conference in Madison. It was a great way for all of us to really kind of look at other schools and how they are running things, and for all of us to just kind of compare how we handle certain issues, or how we all come up with different ideas on how to get students more involved. And then upcoming events, we are holding a talent show on the 21st at West, and then the National Honor Society Awards Night is going to be on the 11th, and the first baseball season game is going to be on the 1st of April.
My gosh, I think the snow will be gone.
Have a great month.
Do you have a time for the talent show?
Not yet, because we're trying to coordinate around some of the sports that are going to be in the gym. It'll probably be between 7:00 to 8:00-ish.
Okay.
Michaela, congratulations to you personally as well. That's a nice accomplishment.
Thank you.
My kids.
Emily?
Yeah, so I'm from North, and so this is some stuff that we had the last month. First of all, a lot of students from Polaris jumped into the icy lake after raising money for the Special Olympics throughout the school.
Wow. Must've been cold.
Rotary Club hosted the Winter Formal Dance, which was a few weeks ago, and the students had fun setting up, and the dance was very successful. We also had a pep rally before Winter Formal, which featured staff versus students basketball game. The staff were victorious by only a few points, and the rally also featured mail palms and a balloon drop with cash prizes.
Oh.
For the winter season results, boys' swimming took 3rd place in the SEA, girls' basketball tied for 4th place, and also during their season beat state qualifiers Kimberly and Thornville. Boys' basketball finished tied for 5th, wrestling finished in 8th, and dance teams placed in the top half of the invites, and ice hocks finished in 7th. Spring sport practices are starting up soon for track, baseball, softball, girl soccer, and boys' tennis. They're hoping for some warm weather soon. We had Sasquatch Days, which was our final spirit week of the year, and had a lot of great participation with that. Sassy the Sasquatch roamed the school and took pictures with lots of students and staff. Sources of Strength organized 50/50 raffle at a basketball game and raised over $200 for the day-by-day warming shelter. North hosted the District's All Ensemble Festival for several schools in the area, and their seniors and instrumentalists performed pieces that had been preparing for months, and many of them advanced to the state level at UWO. And then North Forensics has been actively participating in meets, and their team of dedicated freshmen has had a lot of successes in various categories. Coming up is North Night, a herd game on March 13th, Student Council Elections on March 14th, and then the Hall of Fame and Academic Awards Ceremony on March 15th.
Thank you so much.
Very nice. Dr. Cartwright?
Absolutely. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and talk related to the superintendent's good news report. Recently, our Community 1 students partnered with American Heart Association to spread awareness on heart disease. Specifically, they offered sessions in yoga for stress relief, hands-only CPR, hallway exercises, and even healthy snacks. Community 2 juniors are embarking on a semester of service projects while the seniors are researching their senior internships. Juniors begin their projects by participating in a project fair, where needs from the community come into the classroom for students to learn and identify a cause that they want to work with. Seniors are focused on the future career plans and aspirations. They spend time preparing and researching their intern placement options and hear from the mentors and industry experts. The Webster Stanley Middle School Forensics Team recently received A ratings for their prose and readers theater pieces. They are advancing to the Level 2 competition. After three separate performances, judges rate students on appropriateness of the piece selected, introduction, delivery, handling of the manuscript, and use of time. Great job for these students from Webster School. Perry Tipler Middle School and the Alps Charter School recently enjoyed classroom visits from the Leadership Oshkosh Participants. The students were able to hear from community leaders, and the community leaders were able to learn more about the school and charter classrooms. Being a participant of the Oshkosh Leadership Program, I can tell you that the comments that people came back to on the debrief of this, they were very impressed with our students, and they were very complimentary and provided a lot of kudos. 1st grade students at Carl Trager Elementary School participated in the Wisconsin Golden Archer Awards. This is a chance for students in Wisconsin to review and choose their favorite book. Carl Trager 1st graders reviewed five picture books over the past month, and each student voted for their favorite. The school community is now patiently waiting to see if his votes match the votes of all the other students across Wisconsin. Student athletes from Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West High School recently competed at the state wrestling tournament in Madison. Alec Hunter finished 5th at the 106, and Edgar Haradea finished 3rd at 170. Congratulations to all of these talented student athletes. Jefferson Elementary School recently hosted a "Celebrate Us" family night. The event brought over 100 students, families, and staff together for a night of celebrating the unique talents, diversity, and backgrounds of the entire school community. During the event, families received a passport to explore and take part in many unique experiences, including performances by traditional Hmong dancers, African drumming, art displays, make-and-take activities, readers theater performances, family photo booth, and so much more. And we just heard a little bit about this, but from the Oshkosh North, Sources of Strength Student Group recently raised over $200 and collected several boxes of warm water to donate to the day-by-day warming shelter. The Sources of Strength is a student-run organization at Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West, whose ultimate goal is to combat sadness, anxiety, and anger in our schools and community by connecting people to hope, help, and strength through campaigns and positive messaging. The Oshkosh Area School District was recently recognized by the Oshkosh Area United Way, being named one of the top 5 large organizations to receive the Campaign Top Performer Finalist Award. Special thanks and recognition also goes to Al Wing from our recreational department, who is the director there, who has organized and helped facilitate this campaign for the past 24 years within the district. A great big thank you to the entire Oshkosh Area School District United Way campaign team and to everyone who contributed to this year's campaign. We're continuing to spotlight a few of our teachers and sharing their reflections on why they teach. And so as you can see here, we do have three individuals, and two of them being teachers and one of them being a paraprofessional for tonight. We are so grateful to all of these individuals and for everyone throughout the district who support our children on a daily basis. It's only been a week, so it's not as full as normal. So as you can see, I'm always committed to building community through education, and as superintendent, committed to being present and engaged in our schools and throughout the community. On the screen, you'll see just a few examples of where I've been spending my time for the past week.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cartwright. Wonderful report. With that, we'll move on. We do have one district administrator supplemental report. Dr. Kim Brown had prepared a report on the Achievement Gap Reduction. We ask if she could just give us an executive summary of that, so that the board is reminded of what that's about and the public can know as well. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, so the AGR is the Achievement Gap Reduction Report, and you might remember that formerly known as Sage. And I think most of you know it as Sage, the Student Achievement Guaranties in Education, and that changed in 2015 to the AGR program. But it hasn't changed a whole lot. It still has three strategies that you can choose from in the Oshkosh Area School District. The schools that are utilizing AGR, either they both have instructional coaching and choosing the 18-to-1 classroom size. And so those are their strategies that they utilize. And then, of course, you could see in the report where they are, each school, and their grade levels, and where they are. I just want to remind you that that is an attainment score, and so that means that is where they are right now to an end-of-the-year goal. We would expect all the kids to be where they need to be by mid-year. So you'll get to see that later on this year, their full year, and the principals will be here to present some of the things that they have done this school year.
Very good. I always look forward to this report for many reasons. To me, it speaks to equity in our district, and it also speaks to accountability. And it's important that all of our students be given the opportunity to achieve to their highest potential. We all benefit when our students are successful. So thanks to you and to the AGR schools as they provided you with information for this report.
Excellent.
Any questions? Okay, then moving on, are there --
Thanks, Dr. Brown. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other committee reports tonight from the board? I do know there's an education committee meeting tomorrow, so we're looking forward to that report at an upcoming meeting. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the board tonight on a non-agenda-related item? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak to the board about an agenda-related item? Seeing none, we will move on to the workshops. Adopting New Social Studies Standards. I've also looked forward to this report.
I'm a better bite. You were a former social studies teacher.
I was, in a prior life. Far away in a long-lost galaxy.
Once a teacher, always a teacher.
So we have Ms. Conrad here tonight and Ms. Poyer joining us.
Well, thank you. So we'll go right into the presentation. And once again, I'm Julie Conrad, the Director of Curriculum and Assessment.
And I'm Vicki Poyer. For those who do not know me, I am a 25-year veteran of our school district. I have been a high school and middle school social studies teacher, a peer coach for our district, a gifted and talented teacher for our district, and now I'm an instructional support teacher, serving primarily Carl Trager Middle School.
So this fall, a K-12 Social Studies Task Force was put together, and it was made up of elementary teachers, middle school teachers, high school teachers, literacy coaches, instructional support teachers, library media specialists, and they all came together this fall working with Chris McDaniels, who is a social studies consultant from the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. And there, we tapped into the DPI, because there hasn't been new social studies standards to look at for over 20 years. And so this was really, we knew this was going to be interesting, meaty information to dive into. But we also know we needed a structure for that task force. So as the educators got together, they were given four goals to meet, as they met with Chris McDaniels, and then continued on with their meetings. They were asked to establish a definition of what a social studies student would look like if they were college, career, and community-ready. What we've been doing with all of our content areas when they're meeting to look at standards and what our learning targets would look like within the Oshkosh Area School District, we asked them to define that, because that's really what our goal is, is that upon graduation, we want our students to be college, career, and community-ready. So the group went through process facilitated protocol, and this is the definition that they came up with. Seems like a pretty good definition. And so from there, after they came up with the definition, they were asked to explore the college, career, and civic life framework, and that's the C3 framework. And that was an exhibit that was included in your board packet, because the C3 framework, as we're going to talk about later, is the foundation for a lot of the social studies standards that states are developing across the country. We also looked at the new Wisconsin K-12 Social Studies Standards and really dove into those. The third goal was to really understand the three-year rollout of standards along with the planned resources to districts. The Department of Public Instruction has put together, since new standards have been rolling out, they've put together a plan to help districts take a look at that. And the last piece was develop our own three-year implementation plan at the K-5, 6, 8, and 9-12 level.
So I'm going to speak a little bit about the C3 framework. This is a national document that was published in 2013. It was written collaboratively with a number of stakeholders, including classroom teachers, university professors, state leaders, professional organizations such as the National Council for Social Studies and National Geographic, just to name a few. And as Julie alluded to, this really is a foundational document that provides states and local districts, really a guidepost for the skills and the concepts necessary to create a social studies program that prepares students for college, career, and civic life. So central to the C3 is an inquiry arc. And the inquiry arc really is a different paradigm for teaching social studies to our K-12 students, in which students develop questions and plan inquiries around a social or historical phenomenon, and then investigate that inquiry through a variety of disciplinary lenses, through the lens of an economist, a geographer, historian, a political scientist. And then throughout that inquiry, students are asked to make claims, they're asked to substantiate those claims with textual evidence, and then to communicate their findings in an authentic way, and finally, take civic action on their findings. So as an instructional support teacher in our district, what I'm most excited about with the C3 framework really is its direct connection with our initiatives with English Language Arts throughout our district and really throughout our state. And using the inquiry arc, social studies taught through this manner really champions many of the initiatives in our district. For example, close reading of text from a variety of complexities, research standards, our ITL standards, and finally, having students communicate their findings with a wide variety of mediums, digital mediums, including writing.
And so as, from a curriculum director's lens, or as we start to put this, as we start to piece these all together, that inquiry arc leverages three powerful standards with English Language Arts, and those are writing and research standards. Our common assessments at the secondary level are anchored in writing to pull that writing across all of our content areas, and one of those high-leverage standards is something called W9. It's the ninth writing standard that really utilizes taking a text and citing the evidence with it, which is a key skill in state assessments and also in the ACT. Also with this, as we're pulling across this in the shared language, is the Information Technology Literacy Standards that are also a great blend, and you can see that in its link to our school improvement goals at our secondary level and our elementary level.
So if what I'm most excited about is the connection to English Language Arts, I would say that our task force members are most excited about the opportunity to have students take informed civic action. And I'm going to read off my notes for this point, because I really don't want to miss anything. So we met, our last meeting was two weeks ago with our task force, and many of our task force members have been experimenting with informed action in their classroom and working closely with our technology integration coaches, excuse me, to create opportunities for students to take action beyond their classroom, beyond classroom debates. And so just some examples, using Flipgrid to create public service announcements, establishing international grid pals with students in other cities, states, and throughout the nation, actually, having students develop newscasts and blogs that are aired outside of the class walls. And actually, we have a task force member here with us today who has really championed partnering with global, excuse me, with community organizations and businesses in her classroom. So really reaching out, having students contact businesses, and having businesses come back into the classroom as well. So getting back to the inquiry arc, dimension 2 really hones in on how do experts conduct inquiry? So how would a historian view a particular issue versus a geographer? So for an example, we can take a look at, let's say, the bombing of Pearl Harbor as a historical investigation for a student. How a sociologist would approach that inquiry is very different than how a geographer would approach that inquiry. So let's take it through the lens of a geographer. So how did the bombing of Pearl Harbor affect the human and physical landscape of Hawaii? What kind of text would a geographer study to gather that information? They would critically look at maps, charts, soil samples, aerial photography, then and now, to really explore and gather information to make a substantive claim. And how a political scientist would approach that inquiry obviously would be very different.
And if you're hearing the connections to literacy and the things that we're doing within science, I do, and it gives me chills every time I hear it. So with that, the Wisconsin K-12 Social Studies Standards were adopted by the state legislature in the spring, and several Oshkosh Area School District staff members, and I'm going to read this off too, so I don't forget anybody, were integral in writing of the standards or the supporting appendices that were in the document, and that was also one of your exhibits in there. So first, we have Vicki Poyer, who's here with us. She's a member of the Wisconsin Social Studies Task Force, a presenter at the Wisconsin State Standards Council, a lead for the inquiry writing team, a co-facilitator of the CISA 6 rollout workshop. We have Matt Mock. He is a member of the Behavioral Science Team for the writing of the standards. Heather Kangas, a member of the Standards Base Reading Task Force. And with us this evening, we have Wanda Kern, one of our elementary teachers here in Oshkosh, and she was a member of the K-5 Units of Study Task Force for Social Studies. So our Oshkosh Area School District educators, they have their fingerprints all in these new standards and within the appendices.
Did you see my fingerprint right there?
You saw your fingerprint? Yeah. So in this writing, and as we were doing this, so we had experts right here with us in Oshkosh as we were rolling this out, and through all of this, we were using the C3 framework as our underpinnings. So that's why when we come to you with a resolution two weeks from now, we're not only asking to adopt the Wisconsin K-12 Social Studies Standards, we're asking to adopt that framework, because we feel that's really supporting the purpose behind those standards. So speaking of the standards, these are the 26 INCER standards and learning priorities, there's 26 INCER standards within the social studies standards, and these go across all the grades, K through 12, and underneath there, and that was in the supporting exhibits that you got, are the learning priorities and the grade band performance expectations. But the key with this is these standards replace the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards that were put into place in 1998. So that's 20 years that we have been working off our current social studies standards. And for K-5, our social studies curriculum resources are that old as well. And so Wanda's probably shaking her head yes, back behind us. We have a true need, but we've really been holding off as long as we can, waiting for guidance on the social studies, on the social studies standards.
So going from social studies standards, which were very fact and concept-based, 20-plus years old, to really a new paradigm shift in how to approach teaching social studies, really requires five significant instructional shifts. And our three-year plan for K-5, 6, 8, and 9-12 really accounts for each of these instructional shifts. And depending upon the level, they're pretty significant. We spoke to some of them already. I just want to talk briefly about the dynamic balance of skills and content. As we are investigating historical or social phenomenon through the various lenses, we not only are steeping students in the rich standards of inquiry and research, but we're also approaching it through the disciplinary lenses in tackling key vocabulary, key strategies, key concepts. Going back to the example I gave earlier of the bombing of Pearl Harbor, obviously, we need to talk about the movement of people, places, goods. need to talk about the movement of people, places, goods, ideas, which is a key geography concept. So it's a dynamic balance of both, it's not one or the other.
In addition to the instructional shifts, the social studies standards for the first time provide a K through 12 progression, a learning progression for social studies. Prior to this, there was not vertical alignment between the grade levels when it came to standards in the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards. They were, K-5 was written separately from VI, VIII was written separately from IX, 12. This is a shift, and these are really representing a progression. And it's been a priority, and it needs to be a priority, that we're focusing on K-5 when it comes to social studies, because that, social studies has been...
Jan, I was actually at a meeting with now Governor Evers, but at that time, State Superintendent Dr. Evers, and we were sitting across the table from one another, having a conversation about our social studies standards, and we liken the analogy to Jan of the Brady Bunch. So social studies is Jan.
Well, you know, in literacy math, it then marsha, 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 marsha.
Yeah.
So with this, and like I alluded to before, the DPI has a three-year rollout plan, you're going to notice the color coding is going to look very similar to science, because this is the approach we're taking across the state when rolling out any type of content standards. So, drumroll, specifically, the work from the K-12 Social Studies Task Force is represented up here. So here is the K-5 plan that is also included in your board packet. Each one of the plans starts with Phase 1, which is that awareness and understanding, that's in the year we are now. Phase 2 is bridging into the new standards, so once we have board approval that these can be adopted, we can move forward into that next phase. And then teaching and assessing to the social studies standards. And once again, you're going to see it, a very similar role interface from science. These are the, this is the VI, VIII rollout plan that was in your packet, along with the IX, 12 rollout plan. And you're going to see a lot of similarities, but you're also going to see some differences because it's really based on the needs of each of the levels. And the detail that you're going to see, I really feel that the complexity is really going to come in with K-5, and we're going to really need to pay attention to that because our elementary teachers are going to need a lot of support. There is a lot on their plate, there is a lot on the elementary students' plate, so we're going to have to be very purposeful and intentional how we support our classroom teachers going through this with the rollout, and we know we have some other things coming with that. So speaking of rollout and alignment, this is aligned to our current strategic plan. I'm going to predict that there's going to be some type of alignment with our next strategic plan, because we all are all about teaching and learning. We know that, we're anticipating with the social studies new adoption, there will be coming down the road a curriculum adoption. And if you remember from science, approximately, we budget $375,000 per, at a level like K-5, VI, VIII, IX, 12, when it comes to that. We will have a phase-in plan. VI, VIII, and IX, 12 were previously adopted two years ago, if you remember that. K-5, once again, we held on that, so K-5 is absolutely going to be our priority. We're not anticipating huge adoption or shifts for VI, VIII, or IX, 12. And with that, we're also going to be with that adoption, asking to take a look at staffing, because there really needs to be leadership and coordination within this implementation. And so if you recall, like with science and with STEM, we really need somebody with expertise at the helm as we start to roll this out, because there is going to be a lot of planning to do this, and do this in a way that we are incorporating and leveraging those key literacy standards. So that leads us into our last slide for the evening, and this is a pretty, I felt like this was a really powerful infographic from the Chief Counsel of State, State Officers, right? School officers, thank you. I was trying to do that one off the top of my head. And so as we look at this, we've been talking about equity a lot, and we're going to continue to hear us here in our school district and as educators talking about equity. Having social studies and making sure that it's not a marginalized content area is a key, to me, a key equity issue. And I know, Vicki, you had one other point that you wanted to put on.
Throughout the state, throughout the nation, throughout the state specifically, social studies minutes have been cut drastically to the point where many schools no longer have K-5 social studies education, truth, throughout our state. Within our own school district, our teachers have been without materials for many years in teaching social studies. It's not taught consistently, it's not taught on a daily basis, in many places, it's not taught on a weekly basis. And so really, as we move forward, I think about my own children, I have two children who are now graduated from our school district, and in our family, we took them to museums, we took them on trips, we read widely, we traveled, we provided all of those out-of-school experiences that really augmented their social studies education. Not all children have those advantages. And we really want to bring all of those learnings into our classroom for all of our students.
Awesome. So on that note, questions and conversations?
Great presentation. Any comments or questions?
Well, your enthusiasm is contagious.
I know, right? I want to do this.
Thank you. This is something I've been involved with for probably nine years. And so we've been waiting for these to come out, so I'm very excited.
I got chills too, Julie. I know, it's awesome.
This is such a very, well, to me, very significant, but it's the whole gist of the presentation, the whole thought of all of this, this is a small, little thing, but when I was reading through this and I read the line, "It's no longer realistic to require students to memorize everything," it was like a hallelujah. Like, my kids scream this in my ear all the time, you know, I have three of them, and they're like, "Mom, I will never have to memorize anything." One, will I not have a computer? One, will I never have a calculator? This is ridiculous. Like, it's, so just to hear that, you know, that the education, the academic out there is finally, like, this is 20 years old, catching up. It's not about memorizing those dates, we don't need to do that ever again. You know, I don't have to pick up and go to the library and walk 20 hours to get there, you know? Like, you know, my parents said when they were kids, to get this information anymore.
No, it's right here.
Yeah, it's right here. So that's, you know, you can up their skill set, which is taking this into literacy and all of those other things, and aligning this with the science is awesome. Because as a parent, I wouldn't have to listen to the complaining again, because they've already done it with science, so now they're going to do it with social studies, you know, where, "Mom, it's so different." And I'm like, "Yeah, I know, it's awesome."
It's great.
Yeah, it's very exciting.
Mr. Preschel?
Sure. First, I want to say that my favorite subject in elementary school was social studies.
Oh, good for you.
So I enjoyed memorizing everything, I really did.
Can we quit?
Not anymore. Many years ago, you could have, but I enjoyed it. And I really, and I have a lot of hope that this can rejuvenate love in social studies. I almost said social media. I don't love social media. But, and it's partially because of that. You know, I want the next generation to be excited about learning about this stuff, because this is the stuff that drove me to be an active citizen in my community, learning and understanding this stuff, and utilizing some of this stuff, the history that you learn and the impact of communities through everything that was learned in social studies is such an integral part of being involved in our communities. And my hope is that, is that the next generation that gets this, gets engaged with this, understands that, and learns to not have to, you know, understands that need of not have to memorize everything and understand the efficiency of that, and probably utilize that to improve our communities. So thank you for that, I think this is great.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Preschel. I would just like to make a few comments. I'm really very happy to see these dimensions under the inquiry arc. We live in a world that is so different from the one I grew up in, where we depended on a couple of TV stations out of Green Bay, maybe a couple out of Milwaukee at one point, and a daily newspaper, and the proliferation of where people get their information from, where they get their facts from, is so different and so bountiful as compared to what I grew up with. It's also so important, as we talk about college, career, and community ready, to me, this is speaking about skills for a lifetime, being able to develop questions and plan inquiries, gathering and evaluating sources, develop claims and using evidence, communicating and critiquing conclusions, taking informed action. I have a sister and a brother-in-law who both were very active in debate, and it's very interesting getting together with them, because they do this on a very high scale. And they challenge me in a positive way to support statements I make and claims that I make, or evidence that I think I'm providing, but that's a good thing. I also have had the opportunity over the last several years to be involved on a civic level as a poll worker, and that has been fascinating, in terms of people coming to the polls, knowing clearly, or appearing to know, who they want to vote for, or what they want to vote for, as compared to people coming and saying, "Oh, I didn't know there was a question on the ballot to change the state constitution, what does this mean?" Or, "Well, I always vote the way my husband votes," which is maybe okay, but I'm not sure that they're applying this inquiry arc. We've had people who have come to the polls and they're not really sure what they're voting for. And so I'm hoping that we can change that in this community, to have voters who are more informed. That's critical to a democracy, to have voters who are well-informed. I also see implications in terms of teacher licensure. PI 34 came out last year, there've been a number of changes related to teacher licensure over the years. And as you were speaking, I was reflecting on the expectations we have on our elementary teachers, because we expect them to teach everything, we expect them to teach all the disciplines, and yet, we often describe them as generalists. They don't have deep preparation in all of the content areas, but we expect them to be able to answer questions, to do this, do the, what's expected in science, literacy, and so on. There are changes that will impact this at the secondary level, in that, just be aware, there are changes coming at the secondary level for social studies people, where they may not have this broad background that those of us who had broad-field social studies majors had. Not that we have to preserve everything we did years ago, but at least, when you talk about the various disciplines in the social studies and looking at things through the lens of an economist or a geographer, it's good to know something about that background in order to do that. So there's some interesting challenges, and the fact that we have materials that are 20 years old, if we have materials, and the fact that we don't have materials to teach, that's a real challenge, because again, there is so much on the plate of those elementary teachers in particular, to have to create materials or find materials now in order to do this will be quite a challenge, with all the other things they're expected to do, like indoor recess on cold winter days and a few other things. So I really look forward to this. I think that this holds great potential to help us with the three Cs of college, career, and community ready, and I'm very excited about this. So thank you for...
You're welcome.
For the work and the leadership at the state level, to Wanda and to Vicki, and to Mr. Mock.
Yep, and Matt Mock and Heather Kangas.
And Heather. And to all of you for leading the charge here in the district. This, to me, is quite exciting, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on then, another workshop I've been looking forward to is the Facilities and Enrollment Projections with Bray, Mrs. Schnorr, and Mr. Fox. Someone was thinking donuts were coming tonight.
No, sorry.
It is Ash Wednesday, so maybe we...
Probably it's better not to have donuts today. But there's something going on in the Bray group.
Okay.
Is this the whole, everything that was provided to include?
Well, good evening, it's good to be back with you again. I think the last time I was here was September or October?
October.
It was October, thank you. So we wanted to kind of, I guess, reset things a little bit. Again, we took a little bit of a pause in this, and so we just kind of wanted to recap where we are to date and really set the table moving forward in this process. Again, so kind of a little bit of this as a reminder, and then kind of, there's a little bit of some new information in this as well. Again, the study process that we went through to date was really a deep dive into your existing facilities on a number of different fronts. There was architectural and site analysis, going through the buildings with our internal teams, going through existing building drawings and information we had there. We brought engineering teams through the buildings to review plumbing, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, and electrical needs for all of the facilities. American with Disabilities Act, we looked at the buildings in terms of how they perform to code for all of the accessibility standards in the current code. Again, kind of an important note in that is, the question we always get is, what is grandfathered, what is not grandfathered? For the most part, again, the building is, for our purposes, the building is code-compliant if it was built under the code at the time, but when we make modifications going forward, we obviously want to bring things up to date as we move forward. If there's a building without handicap-accessible toilet, for example, that's something we probably want to, you know, put a little bit higher up on the burner, so to speak. And then obviously, a lot of communication, talking to Jim and his staff as we were going through the buildings to learn more, because a lot of what is valuable in this process is really the institutional knowledge that you can't find on a paper anywhere. So again, we want to make sure that that gets documented throughout the process. Again, the facility study had a lot of information in it, I forget how many pages it was, but it was a very lengthy document, and this is kind of a nice, this slide kind of is a nice summation of the different sections that were included in it, which again, kind of encapsulates the work of the four points in the previous slide. So building evolution diagram, this is a really cool diagram that most districts don't have. It really documents the vintage of each section of the building, so when it was originally built, when, really primarily when the additions were put on to the buildings. A really nice document to kind of understand, most districts don't have kind of something that encapsulates that. Existing site plan, I think what's unique about this is just understanding the GIS or the property information within each of the buildings. Existing floor plans, again, kind of culling together all of the separate documents you have, but creating a snapshot in time of what the current plans are for the buildings. Again, the building system summary, which is the reports from the engineers and a summarization of that. Needs assessment, again, the critical thing to pinpoint with the needs assessment, it's really just what we need to help fix the buildings, right? So we're not talking needs assessment in terms of, "We need another classroom," or "The room needs to be larger," or "We need new components within the room." Again, this is trying to fix what we have, fixing walls, floors, ceilings, those types of items. Site summary, again, understanding some of the issues with regard to drainage and topography and pavement conditions. The ADA needs assessment, again, there was some graphic documentation to support that in addition to the narrative. The roof analysis and understanding... clearly kind of identify the kind of the work that was part of this, what it was not. So, again, the top one, I think, is really the most, one of the more critical ones, that it's not about analysis of the quantity, size, or quality of the educational spaces. It's really, again, conditions and facility needs for the buildings. It wasn't an exploration of solutions. It wasn't an evaluation of educational capacity, and it's not an estimate or approximation of how long the systems will continue to go. Again, there's recommendations for best practices based on the length of period of time. Again, we know, you know, a boiler can last much longer than maybe the prescribed amount of time we think it can, but there's generally rules of thumb in terms of the industry of when you should look to replace those types of equipment. It was not a prioritization or, again, or a recommendation, and it was not a projection of kind of how the, of the cost of that. And again, we'll get to that because that came a little bit later in the process. So wanted to touch on district enrollment and projection. So as part of this process, the district did work with the UW Wisconsin Applied Population Lab to evaluate potential future enrollments for the district. Again, this was, we also then created a document that summarized kind of the history as well as led into the projections. So the history for the district came from a study and a report that was done internally on May 2018. We've also added enrollment numbers since then from the January 11 counts within the schools. And, again, kind of an important part to include here is that this is resident only. This doesn't factor in open enrollment numbers. And then I did want to kind of touch on the points. So the UW Wisconsin Applied Population Lab is, they use kind of a number of different factors in what they're trying to determine. They're listed up here, the birth and kindergarten enrollment trends, population estimates, and area housing starts. So they're kind of using, I think, you know, data in terms of trends and that type of thing. The final point there, this does not offer the detailed analysis of potential growth or the potential for development within surrounding communities. So at the time of the population study that was done, there are sort of two different ways you can go with that. There is the Applied Population Lab study that many, many districts use throughout the state, and it's a great process to go through it. There is another company that's started to do these more regularly for school district. The company's called M.D. Roffers. They do a little bit deeper dive process through this. They work with local municipalities and developers and kind of try to understand, really, I think, a little bit more what's happening in the district, more so than kind of just the pure data-driven analysis of the enrollment. So that study was, the district did not go forward with that study, but we just kind of wanted to point out to the board that that is something you could consider should you want to, again, take kind of a deeper dive into the analysis.
I have a question. So when we did this study, I know we have the new numbers from 2018-19, and so this is for enrollment and projection, and we don't know the implication yet of whether or not, so this does not include Oshkosh Truck's new headquarters, correct? And what kind of business that'll bring in? Does that include this at all yet? No?
No, it does not.
Or the arena or some, kind of like that. I don't personally, obviously, have any idea how that will affect our community and affect our numbers, but those aren't in here, that they don't include those kind of things, those huge economic rolls.
Correct. Again, I think that the M.D. Roffers study would have a little bit more detailed analysis in that. They actually break, they break up a community into areas, and they kind of look at the develop, the developability and kind of evolution of each of those areas over time. They talk to developers, they talk to the municipalities to kind of understand, I think, in a little bit more detail what's being done.
So that would be one of our next steps that we-
It could be, yes.
Okay.
There is a significant price difference between the enrollment study that we did-
Absolutely, yes.
-and the one that Clint is talking about. There was a significant price difference, and so at this stage in the game-
Yes.
-we went with the less expensive option.
Agreed, yep.
Maybe that's something we could look at.
Yeah.
Also to take into consideration, for example, where we know with Oshkosh Corp., where there's approximately, I believe, 500 people that they're looking to bring on board within the next year to two years, which could potentially be 500 families. So even with the other report that comes in there, it could, it could look at that, but it's making an assumption that those families are not going to open enroll out of the district-
Right.
-and/or that those families do reside within the district.
Yeah.
Which is a part of that conversation as well, especially when we know how much school districts are economic drivers within communities.
Right.
And unfortunately, just the outside look of the outsider facilities is a driver of that too, as to whether or not families decide if they want to stay here.
Yes, I've heard that a lot. Thank you.
This relates back, for me, to the social studies conversation that we just had, how does a geographer look at this, how does a sociologist look at this, and the questions that are posed, and gathering the evidence, and forming conclusions, and so on. So I see a real-life application going on here between, as you've heard about in terms of the social studies, which we've not all studied yet, and this report. So kudos to those who planned tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Did you have anything else?
No, I was, I just had a quick, I didn't know if they were, how that intertwined in here or didn't, so that was my only question.
So then, I guess my question is that there's a suggestion that we're going to have a continual decline in enrollment based on these numbers. Is that what it says? Correct, yeah, correct. That was kind of the, I mean, and again, with a district as large as you are, while 300 seems like, I think, a big number to more people, we would probably say it's sort of, the trend would be sort of steady to slight decline, but yes, to your point, yes, based on the numbers from the applied population, they would see the decline. Let me, just a-
Yeah, but with our, like you said, with our numbers, that's slight.
Just a quick, just a quick point. We worked up in the Westapir School District, and they did the same process. They hired applied population. Applied population came back with what they thought were crazy growth numbers. Again, Westapir is growing rapidly, right? And what we did was we used the M.D. Roffers report, in their case, to validate that number because it's scary to build to the growth that they were seeing. So, again, in this case, should the district go through with this, I think, again, it would be more of a validation process and maybe just trying to see if some of the recent development really will have a big spur on what enrollment could be.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
So within your document, there's actually two pages of the kind of that enrollment. So the one is, the one that's included in on the presentation here, which maybe is a bit fuzzy on the printout just due to the, and then I did print it out, kind of a, hopefully a cleaner-
So they're identical?
Yes. Hopefully, a little bit cleaner, crisper version of that.
It is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, so as we mentioned earlier, that initial facility study was not an analysis of educational capacity. So we have done some preliminary capacity calculations for the building as part of this study as we've kind of continued this process. So we wanted to just introduce this to the board tonight and discuss kind of the methodology and theory behind this. Capacity is based on a number of factors, again, number of classes per grade level, number of tracks within a school. Again, some schools might just have, you know, one first-grade classroom, others might have three. So, again, we want to work through what the model is for each building. Really, the critical one is the number of students per class or class size. Again, this isn't a building capacity analysis, this is educational capacity analysis. So we want to understand what the goal is for the district in terms of teacher-to-student relationship and how many students. I don't need to describe the achievement gap reduction much here, that was discussed earlier, but, again, that's the program to have, to bring that number down within schools. So you have a number of schools within the district that utilize that program, and we wanted to make sure the capacity recognizes that. And then utilization for spaces, and I'll kind of touch on that a little bit more, but elementary's a little bit easier calculation. Again, the kids kind of are in their homeroom for the most part, so you analyze the educational capacity of the building based on the number of classrooms. In high schools and middle schools, it's really more of a schedule-driven process, so the calculation is a much different animal, so to speak, because you're kind of weighing the entire building in that particular instance.
Yeah, I have some questions on that question.
So, again, just kind of quickly to point you to what this is not, again, this is not size, quality of educational spaces. So we're purely saying if it's currently being used as a classroom, we're sort of making a little bit of an assumption here that the room or the space is being utilized for that can hold the number of students that we're saying as a benchmark or a target for class sizes. This is not building capacity, so when I say that is, you know, how many people, like I'll use the gym, for example, how many people, because we always see the gym capacity label on the wall, but this isn't how many people you can put in the building per code, this is how many people we think we would like to target to educate within the buildings. It's not an exact science, and what I mean by that is if you were to take the class enrollment or the target class sizes and just shift those numbers slightly, so instead of 27 students per class, take it up to 30 or down, again, given the size of that district, that's going to swing the numbers really drastically. So, you know, there's some, there's some level of massaging here as we go through. Likewise, if you have, suddenly have 28 students, does you suddenly need another classroom? Well, no, you're going to accommodate that, you know, to meet what your building can Again, this is an estimate or approximation of, or is not an estimation or approximation of space needed to educate students. So, again, kind of getting back to some of the peripheral spaces, this isn't like special education, this isn't adjusting that we're maybe utilizing a closet or a storage room or a room that was intended to be a storage room or a closet for some programs and spaces because, again, the space is just not available. And then it's not an analysis of the most efficient configuration. Again, we'll kind of get through that, get to that eventually through this process. So, again, some kind of chart information, again, this is that, this is, you know, the key word here is targeted class sizes. So, again, working with the district, there's kind of two different columns to consider. There's the, kind of just the general class size, got class size, guideline range, and then the AGR or that reduced. And the AGR goes through third grade. So, again, we use this kind of benchmark, we're 24 students up till third grade and then 27 above for a non-AGR program school, and then the AGR elementaries are 18 up till third grade. So, again, this is really kind of the magic, so to speak, of this is, again, if we swing these numbers one way or another, it really does impact that overall swing in things. I alluded to, I alluded to this slide a bit earlier. So, again, the methodology for this is elementary schools, really, capacity is kind of that, I call it, because that's what I use, but that homeroom mentality, so we're kind of counting, you know, first, second, third, fourth, fifth grade classrooms, and really determining the capacity on the number of classrooms we have. Art, music classrooms, special education, gymnasiums, those rooms are not calculated in this analysis because, again, the students primarily sort of start their day in one space and then might go to those spaces intermittently throughout a week or once a day, so to speak. So those spaces really aren't calculated in the educational capacity. High schools, middle schools are very much different. Again, it's a schedule-driven process, and so we looked at, and it's kind of, it's scheduled driven, and it's also kind of a bit ideological in that we're utilizing this to sort of the maximum efficiency of the space, so to speak, as well, because, so what we're looking at is, again, the core classrooms in this particular case, so math, English, social studies, and science. We're calculating at a factor of the rooms being used six out of seven periods per day. So factoring in, there's usually a prep period for most classrooms. And then the elective or encore-type classes, music, art, foreign language, physical education, are being, we used a factor of five out of seven periods a day. But, again, recognizing you might have some rooms that maybe are only used once or twice per day, given, you know, maybe the specialization of the room. So, again, this does kind of have a bit of an optimal nature to it. So, again, the numbers could sway depending on how you factor in that utilization number. So this is, there's a lot more data and charts and stuff kind of getting for each of the schools to support this, but this was kind of the overall numbers that we come up with. And, again, we're using, at the time when we did this, it was before we had the 18-19 numbers, so we're still utilizing the 17-18 numbers in here for each of the buildings. You can see, again, that target capacity that we think the buildings could be utilized at the enrollment, and then the projection through of over or under capacity for the buildings.
I have a question. Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Dr. Grant, you might be able to answer this administration team. What is, I know that these numbers are not done on educational capacity, but is there, like, I remember discussing this sometime with something we did, where there is a percentage of a school at capacity that is educational, healthy environment? It was like, if I can remember, it was like 80%, 85%? Like, you don't want to go over that for capacity because then your area becomes, you know, then you've got kids, you're shifting kind of, is that, am I making that up? Is that a-
No. So just for clarification, actually, that's why I was going to stop us on this, just for a brief moment. Typically, you want to have your capacity at about 85%. And the reason you want to have the 85% is because it gives you that flexibility. So when you have maybe, or you have like, you have a need for a room for like maybe providing specialized services or for intervention services, to where it's not a typical class size, instead it's a smaller class size. By having that 15% flexibility, it gives you that flexibility in which to accommodate those educational needs. The other thing I think is important, I want to highlight, so I'm backing just a little bit on this as well, is when he was talking about what this study is not, and, you know, is the configurations and such. So, for example, right now in our schools, especially our elementary schools, where the gymnasiums are being used as the cafeteria at the same time, it doesn't take that into consideration, which is really, really important because, so what do you do with class, well, obviously, you can't schedule a class during lunchtime for the gym, and then really counting on people to push through. And some of our gyms are incredibly small.
Very small.
And then, so how do you push students through, you know, to have reasonable lunch periods? So that's just an example.
Yeah, we get that a lot.
But, again, the 85% is really reflecting on some of the unique needs that it gives you the flexibility to ensure that you're serving the educational needs of the population rather than the, just looking at it from a strict capacity viewpoint.
Right, thank you.
I think another thing to consider here is that public law 94142 came into play in 1972, which provided for special education services. And we have a number of buildings that were built before 1972, so they were not designed for special education classrooms, for OTPT, for school, social workers, psychologists, guidance counselors, counselors, rather. So the use of these buildings has changed, evolved over time from what it was when they were originally built. And so trying to find spaces for those specialized areas is a challenge. I know you've been talking about the, basically, the curriculum areas, and those are, those are important, but I don't think we can lose sight of the other areas that our schools have been asked to take on. that were built before 1972, so they were not designed for special education classrooms for OTPT, for school, social workers, psychologists, guidance counselors, counselors, rather. So, the use of these buildings has changed, evolved over time from what it was when they were originally built, and so trying to find spaces for those specialized areas is a challenge. I know you've been talking about the, basically, the curriculum areas, and those are important, but I don't think we can lose sight of the other areas that our schools have been asked to take on, providing for a school resource officer.
Right.
That was something that, for some of us, didn't exist when we were elementary or even high school students, and so, there's greater demand for the space at each of our buildings than many of them were designed for or even dreamed about when they were created.
That's, when we go through this process, one of the first things when you meet with staff is, well, what do you need? And they all say, we need storage, and why do they need storage? Because the spaces that were designed as storage are probably being used for educational purposes at this time, you know, we've, you know, there's been that trickle-down to try to satisfy exactly what you said, that buildings that were not meant to do certain things or didn't have space to accommodate certain things, we had to figure out ways to make them accommodate those, so.
Correct.
So, you're absolutely right, yeah, that has not been identified here as well. Again, that kind of gets to the going-forward process a little bit.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I want to ask just a question, because I'm just trying to do some math over here, and that's tough for me, so. The, I'm just looking at that capacity chart that you provided us, and the target capacity column, how is that broken down? Like, how do we get to that number? Like, Emily and Cook is 300. So, is that based on, is that based on the 27 per classroom, or the, if it's an AGR, is it the 18 per classroom, and then we add all that up?
Yeah, I was, I didn't want to get too far into the weeds here, but I'll kind of show you the, I'll let you come out of the weeds. Don't worry.
I broke the projector, I.
Oh.
I just closed out of the turn-on.
No, it's going.
There's a light.
There's a light.
It's what's coming out of your laptop.
Dave's touch. Don't even have to.
Keep this has to be another story. The computer whispered.
Yeah. Happened to me, if you'd see, it did.
So, for each of the schools, we did this, there's also colored floor plans, I don't have those tonight as well, but we went through, so this, just for example, this is South Park, so for the analysis of this, as I mentioned, we did a utilization rate, so we factored in, again, all the classrooms here are the rooms that were core classrooms as well as science. The utilization rate, again, was that percentage of six out of periods per day, so you get to a calculated capacity per classroom that's less than that target. So, again, we're trying to factor in or calculate that those rooms are not being utilized every period of the day. For the elective rooms, so choir, orchestra, band, tech ed, art, family consumer, there's a different utilization rate that we're calculating here, so again, we're trying to, there's, again, like, so for family and consumer ed, for example, that room might not be currently being used at five out of seven periods per day, it might one or two or three, you know, I mean, it might be much different, so again, that kind of speaks to the frame of mind that you have to think of how, and maybe more of an ideal scenario that we're trying to get here a little bit versus kind of how it's currently being used. So, there's, and again, that's the magic of this, too, because you could say, well, that's, given that the size of that building, that's the most we're ever going to use that space, and we can, you know, we can change the numbers to reflect.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, I appreciate you diving a little bit deeper on that, because I'd answered a couple of my other questions, so thank you for doing that.
I would just like to weigh in here on what some people may be questioning, why don't we use those building, or why don't we use those classrooms 100% of the time? To me, that's a productivity issue for a classroom teacher. If you're a secondary teacher and your classroom is scheduled every hour of the day, you probably have to vacate that for one or more periods, and remembering everything you need to take with you, and then finding a place to go to do your work, doesn't mean you're making the best use of that professional's time in terms of preparation and planning and so on, so it becomes a productivity issue for many of our staff if they have to travel, or some teachers in prior years have had to be on what they call carts, so everything goes on a cart, and they move room to room to room. That's not necessarily providing equitable educational opportunities for children when they have to move in that way, because they don't have the opportunity to set up learning activities for all children, so these children then may miss out on rich instructional experiences as a result of that. So, having plans for using a classroom six out of seven or five out of seven periods makes a lot of sense to me. Dr. Kurt, right?
I was just going to echo what you were talking about, and in addition to that, it also takes away natural opportunities, so if a teacher, for example, a student wants to come by and maybe get some additional assistance on some concept that they're learning in the class, if the teacher's having to vacate that room, now it's where you're going to provide that, and what resources are you going to need that oftentimes are there. I equate it oftentimes as to going to work, you know, when you're going to work, you have an office, you know what to expect, and those kind of things. However, if you have a different line of work, maybe a salesman or something like that, you're having to keep everything inside your car, potentially, and go from place to place and pull out what you need, and maybe that's not a good analogy, but it kind of just helps people frame it maybe a little bit better, is having a stable place, I know where I'm going every day, and people know how to find me, they know how to locate me, so on and so forth, versus where is she today, or where is he today?
Where is she this hour?
Right, right. Thank you.
One other question, so, and I think my question actually comes down to equity, so let's just kind of, just roll with this one a little bit here, so, and part of this is, I'm going to ask questions because I don't know the answers to them, and I'm not, I'm not, I don't know all this stuff, so I ask. So, are AGR schools, are they, do we believe that they're going to stay AGR schools for their lifetime, or do we expect them to change, and are they always going to be an AGR school?
I think a lot of that is going to be dependent upon multiple factors, because that is a grant that we apply for. Oftentimes, it's also based, clarification here, Dr. Brown, just to make sure I'm accurate on this, for AGR schools, just want to make sure I'm accurate on this, it is a grant-funded program. In addition to that, it's based off of, it's not necessarily based off of how the school's performing, though, but it is about the free and reduced lunch rate for the school, the economic disadvantage, the percent of students on that.
My question really comes down to, let's say, in hypothetically, in a great world, all of this changes, and we have, you know, we, our schools improve, the economy improves, families' lives improve, and we have less of those families that are, you know, I can't think of the right word, but, but let's say that that changes, and we've built this plan upon those schools being AGR schools, does that change the equity of how we've looked at how these schools are being rated through this? I mean, do we come down later on the line and correct that and do another, you know, review of that? Do you understand?
No, that makes sense.
Because I'd like to believe that our community is going to improve, and that our families are going to become more stable, and that there's going to be less, you know, that our kids are going to redo, are going to rely less on us to provide that, and that their families are going to do all this, and, you know, so, do we plan for something like that, and if we don't, how do we accommodate? I guess that's where I'm going.
I think some of the, if I may, to answer your, to address your question, some of it is factors for which we can't predict right now. We don't, dependent upon the actions of the board and the direction that you choose to take, will kind of drive some of the answers to those questions as well, because, remember, because what we're looking at basically is the socioeconomic factors within communities, and how that impacts the school makeup. You know, who's, you know, and how that school is serving the community for which it is located within. So, your capacity that is up there, to clarify, yes, can shift based upon if the, how the calculations were conducted causes a shift. So, for example, Washington, AGR school, no longer is an AGR school, then the capacity at that point in time would increase, because you're no longer having the limitation of the 18 students in the classroom, you can now go up to the next level on that. But, based off what we most currently have, that is the capacities that's being provided.
Sure. And that's to assume Washington, right now, would be able to, if it were to tomorrow, no longer be an AGR school, and just be, I don't know, typical school, whatever, they would be able to handle the 27 kids in one classroom?
Right, dependent upon the grade level, correct. Correct.
So, we're kind of building in both scenarios here is really what's going on. When we're looking at these charts, is that we're kind of compensating, or not compensating, but we're building in the idea that if a school were to become an AGR school, or if it were to no longer be an AGR school, it would still be covered under like, the capacity, the school's capacity to handle that change.
Potentially, and some of these schools, as you can see, the over and under capacity, the numbers are very small in some of them, especially at our elementary school level.
And that's because we're kind of projecting a decline as well.
And so, what happens, so for example, I don't think it would ever happen, but for example, Lakeside Elementary School, right now, where it's undercapac, it's, we have room theoretically for 19 more students, however, if they were to convert to an AGR site, they may actually end up being overcapacity.
Okay. All right, for me, I think this is important to think about.
I'm going to refer to, go ahead.
Yeah, there's sort of two methodologies you can do with predicting or planning for it, and a little, it's a little bit difficult, because we're dealing with existing buildings here, right? So, again, chances are, most of those classrooms that have 18 students in now are probably a typical-sized classroom, they're probably, you know, close to 900 and somewhere between, you know, eight, 900 square feet, so that size room can handle 27 or, you know, 20 students as we go forward. But, what you, a little bit of what you're alluding to is how do we plan for this, or what do we do if we're renovating or creating, you know, again, hypothetically, a new building, and there's, it's sort of neat how the math actually works out, because if you say 27 students, two classrooms is 54, right? Three AGRs at 18 is 54, so a lot of times, for the planning purposes, you'll actually design three classrooms the same size as a two-classroom building and the others, and that way, if that shift would ever change, you just move some walls around and you're able to kind of accommodate it. The other philosophy is just build all the classrooms the same size, yes, that's maybe a little bit more space than you need for that number of students in that lower population, but it can accommodate it in the future, so.
Okay.
But, the size of the classroom can also have an impact on the instructional strategies and methodologies that are used with the students. If you have students in a more sedentary role, you probably don't need as much capacity, but if you have them highly engaged, moving around the classroom, especially, say, in a science, in a science room, you may need more space.
Yep, and we'll get the historians in the community that'll say, I remember when there were, you know, 35 kids in a classroom that we now have 18 in, and again, it's just, education's different now than it was then, so.
Yes.
Absolutely, and we don't typically do the way I just described it, but that is one methodology you could use to, you know, again, the equity type thing and our issue as well. Mentioned earlier when we discussed the facility report, the facility report originally did not include a budgeting or costing exercise, so I believe this was about a year ago when this was, right, about last December, I think, when we presented the costing portion of this. Again, so this was, again, just reacting to what was in the facility needs, this was not additions, this was not renovations to create special ed spaces, to get rid of art on a cart, all those things, it was to fix and repair the needs within the buildings.
Do you, just real quick, can you high-level, just remind us, those main things, if I recall correctly, we're talking a lot with maybe like exterior doors, sidewalks, playgrounds, those, some of the ADA kind of things, and so, when we were looking at that original dollar amount of the $106 million, that truly, again, had no bearing whatsoever on the educational use of the facility, nor does it take into consideration potential future costs associated to maintain the building due to age. Is that correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Yep. Correct, so it was interior and exterior building upgrades, so again, you know, flooring, ceilings, repairing walls within the building, building systems, and then exterior improvements, sites, so pavement, sidewalks, those types of areas. Again, there's two different printouts in your handout, one might be a little bit fuzzier than the other, I think they're both predl eligible, but the second one should, it's kind of like going to the eye doctor, camera one, camera two, or lens one, lens two, so to Dr. Cartwright's point, that's exactly right, you can see along the top here is kind of each of the main categories within, that were budgeted for this, so ADA accessibility, building envelope, doors, windows, building interior, this is where, again, our flooring, our ceilings, our walls that need to be repaired. The owner items, FF and E, so FF and E stands for furniture fixtures and equipment, so what we included within, under that heading was like room, like an old classroom that had original cabinetry that's kind of in disrepair and falling apart, so I believe the budget in this case kind of accounted for a repair of a lot of those types of items. Plumbing, plumbing fixtures, again, this is, I really have to kind of highlight this one and commend the district, this is very unique that we see, you know, the district has done a ton of work to really bring their HVAC systems up to par, and so we're dealing in a lot of other similar-type districts where this number is ballooned as well, are a very, very big number, so again, congratulations to you guys on keeping up in that area, it's really, really important and critical.
A quick question for you on that particular area with the HVAC system, so this does not include adding in air conditioning to our school sites, is that correct?
It is correct, yep.
And approximately 66% of our school facilities do not have air conditioning, is that correct?
I believe that is correct.
Thank you.
Electrical, electrical needs, and then exterior site improvements, so pavements, asphalt, those types of things. We did also include down at the bottom, the three district-owned buildings, the administrative building, the maintenance building, and the recreational building in this analysis as So, again, some overall assumptions, so this was based on kind of last year's construction costs, and this was kind of a snapshot in time, the projects were budgeted to include supplemental costs, and what I mean by that, again, design fees permitting, construction, you know, costs, and, you know, construction company costs and stuff, we wanted to try to give you a complete project cost for each of these. Again, these are to fix, repair existing systems, materials, finishes, roofing, exterior hardscape. This budget does not include additions or renovation of space for capacity, space, or educational needs. It's not adding systems that are currently not present to Dr. Cartwright, so we're not adding air conditioning to the buildings that do not have it, and again, it did not have a factor in it for inflation costs.
That makes sense.
So, it's a lot of information, and part of what we want to start to introduce tonight is this summary document, so, you know, the struggle is going to be, how do we take a vast amount of information and really distill it down to a very, very simple document that people can digest? So, we've been working with the district on this document, and kind of wanted to show it tonight. simple document that people can, can digest. So we've been working, uh, with the district on this document, um, and, uh, kind of wanted to show it, uh, tonight, um, to you. So again, this, this lists and shows, so this is on the, uh, this is the eight and a half by eleven document that you have there. Again, so they're, they're pretty fine, uh, point, uh, text, but again, a lot, a lot of buildings and information to share. So again, it's each of the buildings, it's the, um, uh, the, uh, capacity, uh, educational capacity, the current enrollment numbers within there, um, the site size of the buildings. Um, so getting into this a little bit is, is understanding we have some very small sites, um, within the district. And, um, you know, the, the neighborhood school is a really important thing and, and, and in no way, shape, or form trying to, to discount that. But there's, again, the, the point of equity, there's some definitely challenges in dealing with some of these sites that are very small and have some, some larger buildings on it. So again, just recognizing some of, um, the issues with that. Um, the building areas, um, and then we have the, the vintages of the buildings. So when they were originally built and the best information that we have in terms of when all of the additions, um, were put onto the buildings. Now, this is primarily just additions, so it doesn't include, you know, if a bathroom was renovated in the summer of, you know, nineteen seventy-three, this is kind of some of the, the bigger projects that, that the buildings incurred.
Dr. Cartwright?
I had a question regarding the average lifespan of a school. I heard you say in meetings what that is, and I can't remember what the average lifespan is.
Um, it's, it's very difficult to quantify. Um, again, I, we, we go into some districts and the, the building is very valuable to that district. Um, we were up in Florence, they have a three-story, um, uh, uh, building, you know, that you probably see in many, that would equate to many of the buildings here. It's an elementary building. They, they love the building. They, they wanted to preserve it. It was very valuable to them. Um, they wanted to preserve it. Again, Milwaukee historic, you know, the historic nature of buildings, they, they want to preserve them. Um, so you, you work within the confines and try to find, find ways to fix them. Um, other places, we're working up in Sebastopol, that's in Door County right now, same thing, almost the exact same three-story brick building, same vintage. Um, they, they, they feel like they've got their useful life out of it. It's a nineteen twenties building, and they've elected to, to take it down to build, to build a new building. They, um, you know, there, there, there's some challenges within it, just getting handicap accessibility
Right.
Within it. So, um, they've elected to go forward with it. Um, we are, go forward with, with moving it. Um, they're used, we, we haven't applied it as much, I would say, in the last five or ten years, because I think just, again, each building and community is different and what they place the importance on their facilities. Um, but there used to be a rule of thumb that if the cost to replace a building, uh, I'm sorry, if the cost to fix a building was sixty-six percent of the cost roughly, of the cost to build a new building, that was kind of a pretty good indication that it might be time to, to look forward, uh, look, look to build a new, new facility. So, uh, again, that's completely a rule of thumb, every community and board and, uh, you know, evaluates that differently, but that was kind of something we, you know, industry-wide, that those kind of looked at.
From an educational industry standard, for educational purposes,
Right.
Not for building purposes, but for educational purposes. It's usually the average lifespan of a school facility is fifty to sixty years. Now again, that is not equating for major renovations to the inside, such as what Harvard has done.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, because I've, I've heard the question of, well, what about Yale, Harvard, Princeton? These are historically very old buildings, which they, is correct.
Right.
But the inside is not the original building.
That's not the original, no, not at all. Right. I was, as, as I was looking at this list, I circled all the ones that were, um, built before nineteen fifty. And we have eleven schools that were built before nineteen fifty, four that were built in the eighteen hundreds, and thirteen schools total, if you count the rec department and our maintenance department, that were, were built in before nineteen fifty. That's a, that's some really old schools there. I had, I did not realize that we had so many that were, and then of course, there's the ones that was built right after the Civil War, in the eighteen hundreds, two in the eighteen hundreds.
Can you talk just a little bit, you mentioned it, um, what is the rec- recommended acreage by school level typically? If you're, if you're looking at?
Sure. Um, the, just, just some ballpark numbers and, and there's, uh, I apologize to chapter and verse, I don't have exactly what the numbers are, but there's, there's some guidelines. They generally say in, in elementary school, if, again, you're planning for a new building, um, we generally look for about fifteen acres for, for a new school. Um, a middle school, um, you're probably in the thirty, uh, uh, the thirty acre range. And then a high school, you're generally looking, um, forty to sixty acres. And, and the high school is, is a, a particular one be, uh, because of just the, the fields. Um, but, you know, there's generally more needs for, for, for fields and stuff like that. So that's kind of why there's the range in the high schools, you know, are, do you have two baseball fields, two softball fields, a football field, the track, you know, all of those types of things. And then obviously with high schools, the parking requirement is, need for parking is, is really significant. So, again, we, um, we've, we've, we've built new schools on very small. We just did a, a project in La Crosse, um, within the city. Uh, it was on a, um, I believe a four acre site. We built a ninety thousand square foot school on that site. Again, that was really important to that community, that they have that school on their site. And, uh, it's a, it turned out to be a beautiful project. They're very proud of it. But, but certainly there were challenges, um, finding space for, for playgrounds and green space and parking. So, um, it, it's, uh, similarly, we did a, a project down in Racine, same thing, a, a brand new school on a, um, existing site. It would actually replace the current building on that same site. So, um, every project is different and unique. But again, those are kind of some guidelines that we look into in budgeting for trying to plan for a new building.
So the combined elementary and middle would be forty-five? You just, or is it?
It would probably have to evaluate that a little, a little bit differently, but, um, I, I would probably say, and you'd probably plan, that, that'd probably be a safe plan.
Adding the two together?
You'd have to kind of look at what the size of each of the buildings are.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Um, so again, uh, so I kind of touched on the additions. Uh, we have a summation here of the capital maintenance needs. And again, there's a, kind of a note on the bottom. And again, we tried to highlight this. This is again, fixing what we have. This isn't additional space. This isn't additions. This isn't renovating, um, for any of the educational needs within the buildings. Um, and then the, the final, uh, column on this chart is our start at trying to identify some of those educational needs within the building. So if you flip your sheet over, um, we started to create, again, a, a kind of a chart to identify on a very high macro level, um, what do the buildings have in terms of some of those additional spaces that we've been alluding to, the special education, the, um, library, art? Do they have library? Do they have, um, art? Do they have dedicated spaces? Do we have a shared cafeteria, um, secure entry vestibule? Um, so again, we wanted to try to create kind of a very easy, digestible, um, diagram that people can see to, to sort of help understand what the needs are. Again, this is not a representation that, that maybe that these spaces are adequate. It's just that they have them in it. So this was kind, again, kind of our first pass through, trying to highlight and identify, um, the spaces.
So this doesn't mean that they don't offer this at their school. This just means that there's not a dedicated space for that at their school?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Got it.
Okay. It's starting to work toward, I, I believe you mentioned equity before. So trying to work through, through and, and get to that, that we have, um, that we have, trying to creating equity between the buildings. Um, and also understanding, you know, again, moving forward, um, a little bit deeper dive in our, you know, the next, the next layer of this is, are they adequate, right? So.
Good. Right. Okay.
What is the notation on the, under the comments for Oakwood School where it says stage slash pit area being converted to makerspace? I don't know what makerspace means.
Um, a makerspace is a, um, flexible, it's, um, a flexible space that can be utilized. Uh, sometimes it's utilized for STEM type activities. Um, it, it's really kind of, um, it's sort of a nebulous term. It's just kind of
Oshkosh Corporation.
A space to, to do things in really.
Yeah.
It's flexible. Some, some districts, and I'm not sure if this would be your case, but some districts utilize that space after hours for people to come in and, and have it for, um, they utilize it for projects for students. So a teacher can check out that space and they can do, set up an art project or a science project or something within that space. So it's, it's kind of just a flexible space to do stuff, really.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, you're up.
Thanks. I guess we just wanted to, to always put in a reminder that, um, you know, even though we have a new governor, we still have revenue limits, um, and those are still very restrictive, the school district. Um, there's a lot of uncertainty as to when we will see a budget. Um, it is a nineteen twenty-one budget that's, they're in the workings right now. Um, July first is the beginning of our fiscal year, so there's no guarantee that we as a district will have a budget by then from the state. Um, so I guess I just wanted to make you aware of that. And a lot of things Governor Eversif talking about is increasing equalization aid to school districts. But because of the revenue limit formula, any more equalization aid we get is just taxpayer relief or property taxes relief. So even though some of the things he's talking about sound really good, but giving us more state aid, it doesn't give us more resources to spend. So, um, we'll continue to keep you updated on the progress of the state budget as we know more.
If I may, um, Ms. Moore, if you could maybe elaborate just a little bit. I know you were talking about, related to how funds are allocated to the school district. Um, so just emphasizing again, it's really dependent upon how the governor decides to, as we say, what category or what bucket the, the governor puts money into. Because a common misunderstanding is that sometimes people will just say, oh, they're, this, the district's getting more money. Um, but oftentimes if it's categorical funds, it can only be utilized within those categories for what is designated. Um, however, it is money that the district does realize. In other words, we do actually get money for that. Um, however, as Ms. Moore was mentioning before, uh, if it's related to, um, the equalization age or, or what I say, going into the general fund, um, because of the revenue limit and what was established back in the nineteen nineties, if, um, if we get additional funds within that general fund, we're more or less a pass through, um, because of that revenue limit. The money passes through the district, we don't realize it, and our taxpayers realize it. Um, and again, that, I'm very clear on that as far as revenue limits. Um, also I think it's, it's very important for our general public to have understanding that, um, except for some small things, but rather large in the past couple of years, um, the state does not provide funds to school districts related to capital projects. Um, so I think that's important for you to, for all of us to note. Uh, as I said before, the past couple of years, they have been giving us funds specifically related to like school safety. Um, and that, and so that was very purposeful, and they could only be used for those purposes. Um, but as our surrounding districts are, um, building or renovating or whatever they may have, um, when it comes to who is paying for that based upon, um, how the state funds districts, um, Oshkosh area, um, taxpayers are actually helping pay for those renovations and, or buildings in our surrounding, well, actually, all the districts across the state. Could you elaborate on that just a little bit for me?
Well, because the, the pot of money for equalization aid is, is a set pot of money. So if another district passes a referendum and collects more state aid, that means it has to come from everybody else. Um, so because there's only a set pot of money. So when one district spends more, they get more, um, depending upon where they are in that aid formula. So as one district passes a referendum and they now spend more money, everybody else gets a little bit less because they're gonna get a little bit more.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Also, just want to touch on it. Again, I, um, as we went through this, I, I made a point of commending the district for the HVAC improvements that you've done. And, and I, I would think, um, a layperson would say, well, why don't you do that for some of the other stuff? And again, just want to remind that a lot of that was done through the Act thirty-two, um, funding mechanism, which no longer exists. So, um, so again, I just wanted to point that out.
And it was the efficiency barings that we've done three of over the last
Six years?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, uh, again, kind of next steps, um, again, uh, continue to evaluate capacity. Again, we, um, kind of saw and understood that, you know, how you look at the numbers or equate the numbers, you know, can, can swing things and change things. Um, evaluate quantity, quality of educational spaces. So again, kind of diving in and understanding what we need, what we need to provide, where we're deficient. Um, evaluate equity of the facilities district-wide. Again, we've kind of touched on that point a few times tonight. Um, consider configurations, uh, building sizes, locations, the grade configurations, um, and, and kind of talking through what's ideal for educationally and operationally. Um, explore solutions identified, um, and the facilities condition, uh, condition assessment, the capacity study and the educational need, uh, within the educational needs identified. And then, uh, consider community engagement strategies moving forward, such as a, a committee or focus groups. Uh, I think most importantly, a, a community survey, um, at some point in time. Um, that's really, um, I think the key one to, to look at and consider.
Yep. And I'll remind the board as well, is that, as we wait for the results from our strategic plan, uh, that was just, just completed with our, our open forums and, and the online survey, um, I'm, I'm hoping that we will also be able to glean some valuable information as to what priorities our communities are also.
I'm really excited to see that.
Because we were, um, we had, I do not know about the face-to-face, but we had over six hundred respondents to the online survey.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't, I didn't write it down, but you, you set a certain percentage of, like, if there's a certain percentage of repairs needed for a certain property, we want to start thinking about whether to do, build new or, you know, continue to repair the property. What is that?
Yeah, it's, it's about two-thirds the cost.
Two-thirds the cost for building new.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, so.
So roughly, it's like sixty?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six. Okay.
But again, I, I, that's completely a rule of thumb. I, you have to, you have to weigh in, you know, again, what, what the importance of, of the building is, the site. I mean, that, that's really important, uh, consideration.
Sure.
And also included in there is, um, taken also how the building is actually built and the potential efficiencies that, um, are involved with that as well.
Absolutely.
Because there's a variety of different types of efficiencies of scale, as you might say, um, when you're looking at, you know, the size of schools. Uh, in addition to that. Um, so those are just things for you to keep in mind, uh, because of course, um, there's operational efficiencies, but there's also, um, educational efficiencies and what type of services you can provide to children, um, dependent upon the size of the building itself, or, you know, the size of, the capacity of the building.
I think one other thing to keep in mind, I just wanted to remind the board, um, as Stephanie had brought up earlier, how remarkable it was the age of some of our buildings. When we did the facility study, we applied some very industry standards per square foot, per linear foot. These were how we, Bray, established a lot of these costs. As we start to look at some of these very old buildings, it is difficult, if not possible, when, when we start to look at, um, should we try to renovate those facilities to make them ADA, um, accessible and trying to get plumbing and trying to get water and trying to get electrical through areas where there isn't a basement, where there's a solid foundation, eighteen-inch walls, and they're buried deep within this very, very solid building, it becomes very challenging. And all of a sudden, those numbers that we were given as, as budgetary numbers are no longer applicable. So, it's important to understand that these are, these are good numbers and are good numbers for preliminary discussion, but when you start to look at the old buildings and you really decide to dive into potentially evaluating the, the true numbers, the, the real cost of gutting and renovating a building, it is likely to be significantly more
Right.
Particularly with the older buildings. Keep that in mind.
Other comments or questions, Mr. Peshaw?
Well.
Yeah, I do, but I'll.
I have one more. Well, actually, it's just, it's not a question, but more of a comment, because I remember my first year on the board, I was sitting right here next to Dr. Lumberger, and we were debating whether or not to invest the seven million into West for the windows. And, um, Dr. Lumberger said, you know, eventually, we are going to have to address how long we're gonna kick this can down the road, because we keep investing, you know, seven million here. And now, West's investment is twenty-four million. That's a really big number. And I think that moving forward, we have some difficult decisions to make regarding that school. So that was my only comment.
All of them.
All of them.
You know, I think my comments kind of go along the lines of the investment that we've done in our properties and, and our, in our buildings over the last done in our properties and in our buildings over the last 10 years, I guess. You know, and specifically, you know, we've bonded for all those energy efficiency projects and everything, and we've installed them. We've been really successful at doing that. And that then puts us in the spot of, you know, having that conversation about our facilities, whether we reconfigure facilities or whether we want to build new. What does that do with that investment that we've, that we've put in, that we bonded for, that we're going to pay on for, you know, for the next several years? And these are all things that I think are really important things for us to think about too, in this conversation. Because we've invested already in some energy efficiency upgrades to our buildings that we might be put in the tough spot of saying, is that, you know, is that investment worth maintaining still? You know, and then having to say, well, no, we're not going to do that anymore. We're going to build new. And we still got to pay on that debt service for that, for that work down the line as well, too. And I, you know, and I think it just, it's unfortunate that this conversation is now coming after all of that stuff has taken place. You know, because we're, I think, as a board, you know, it's having the hindsight and some, the hindsight in looking at something. And sometimes we look at things in what the present moment and what's available for us to do that. And then I'm not saying that we should hold back because we've made that investment.
Right.
I'm just saying is that, you know, it's now something that we also have to take into account of our, of our thinking as we plan forward. I think it's really important for us, and I know that every one of us understands this here, the direction and the path of our buildings is paramount to the success of our children. And we've gotten to the point where we really, I think, we feel the importance of having that conversation and what needs to really happen next. So, so that's just my comments.
Dr. Cartwright, did you want to?
If I may, I think it's just important because, and I appreciate the community members that are tuning in tonight or watching this online in the future and looking at this because we want to make sure that we keep our community informed on this conversation. This is a very serious conversation. For some of our community members, this is like planting an acorn for which they'll never get to enjoy, you know, the shade of the tree.
Potentially, right.
However, for some of our other committee, community members, this could potentially, whatever decision we make, you know, it could potentially be an investment into the community because our schools are nothing more than oftentimes a microcosm of the community for which it serves. The second thing that's really important is the schools are an enormous economic driver to the community for which it belongs to. So for example, as these major corporations are moving in or staffing, we know those are employees, are they going to choose to live within Oshkosh or not? If they choose to live within the Oshkosh area school district, more than likely, we know that most oftentimes people reinvest back into their community. They make their purchases within that community. Hence why I say it's an economic driver. And how people make decisions about where they're going to move to and those kind of things, especially if it's individuals who have children or anticipate to have children, that really, again, drives the economy from a business perspective. And I think that's important for people to notate as well, just as we start down this road of future conversation, some of the things, because there's a lot here to digest, there's a lot of conversations we still have to have. So I don't want to say, we need to do this, we need to do this. I don't have those type of answers. I just want to make sure that our community is aware that this is a very serious conversation and we want people to be involved. We want people to ask us questions because we're going to address those questions and be as transparent as possible with this.
Right, absolutely.
Can I, can I also just add that I, just can I just comment on your energy efficiency?
Sure.
You know, we were replacing systems that were beyond their useful life. And so we, and we are saving money every day on utilities because of those decisions. So I don't think that any of that money was, was a waste because we risked, we risked, we risked some of those boilers stopping in the middle of the winter. And so now at least you don't have, have that here.
Please don't take my comments as those not being necessary steps to have taken because I actually, I agree with your statement. But my concern comes from the idea of what our next steps might do to that invest. It's not that it's, we're not going to still be investing in that, but it's just that we, you know, and I see this a lot because in the world that I work in, sometimes we, we buy something and then, you know, a couple of years down the line, we replace that because we found something that replaced the whole unit or the whole building. And then you get something else that's with that. And so you didn't get your life out of it. You didn't get your life out of that, that investment. And that's the point that I was making is that, is that we're at that risk. We needed, the district needed to make a decision at that point because there was stuff on the line that needed to be done. So I don't disagree with you.
I just have one more point to make.
Okay, Mrs. Carlin.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm so passionate about this issue, you guys know that. I just, for people that might be watching at home, I just wanted to point out that our neighbors are in fact building new facilities. They're, both Nina and Fondalab are going to the ballot this April, and they are building new schools, they are investing in their schools. And we are losing families to these districts because they, you know, people come here to work at the university, or they come here to work at Oshkosh Corporation, and they look at our schools just from the outside and they say, no, I'm going to live in Nina, or I'm going to live in Appleton. And that is happening every day. So I just wanted to throw that out there for people because I can't even tell you how many times I hear, you know, that these school districts are better than Oshkosh, and they aren't. Their buildings might be better, but we know what happens inside our schools is far superior. And, you know, unfortunately, sometimes people will drive by our schools and just keep driving. So that's something to think about, too.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlin. Do our high school reps want to comment on anything this evening that you've heard?
I know at least for West, like, I, a couple of months ago, wrote an article for Index about like the general fund and just like the schools in general. And I asked the question of, like, about rebuilding West. And I just know some students have talked about, like, oh, it's getting pretty old, or like there's some maintenance issues and things like that. Like, kind of like you guys said, everything within the school is going very well, like content-wise, but the school itself, like, the question obviously has to be raised, like, when is it going to get rebuilt?
Thank you. Emily, any thoughts? Not sure tonight?
Well, there's a lot of information to digest here. And as I was listening this evening and reflecting on what I had paged through prior to the meeting, tying back to our earlier workshop tonight on how do the social studies people look at this, from an economic standpoint, what's the return on investment? If we put $107 million into the kinds of things we were talking about without looking at educational quality and people driving by don't necessarily realize what, how we've upgraded, but how have we upgraded in terms of the student experience? I also reflected on the fact that many of these buildings were, were built for children who were going to live their lives in the early 1900s. That's, that's a long time ago. And we'd all agree that life was very different then than it is now. Or children who grew up in the 1950s and 60s. That's a very different era. We're preparing children for the 21st century. And are our buildings equipped to do that, to allow our students and our staff to have those experiences that they need to be not only college career and community ready, but responsible citizens moving forward? As Dr. Cartwright pointed out, the success of our schools leads to economic success and economic development. Every one of us in this community has a stake in how well the children here are educated. And it helps determine what kind of businesses we attract, what kinds of housing is available, and all kinds of spinoffs. So to me, this is a, is a huge issue to take a look at. But I think we're probably at a point now, given that we had a report in the fall, and now we've had this extensive conversation, we need to give administration some direction as to what, what we, what we need to do next. What does this board expect moving forward? Again, we define the what, and administration helps us define the how and gets into processes. So where, where does this board want to go from here? What direction do you need to give, do we need to give collectively to administration?
Wasn't prepared to make that type of decision tonight.
I guess, it could be the steps that you see up there. We also have, we also are eagerly awaiting, at least I think many of us are eagerly awaiting for the results of the community survey and study that was led by Oshkosh for Education in terms of the strategic plan. And it would, it would be helpful, I think, for us to know what the community is thinking about facilities. I too have heard what Mrs. Carlin shared in terms of people saying that the quality of the buildings in Oshkosh is not what they'd like to see for their children. But yet, when we've, when we recently had the report on student performance, we as a district are exceeding expectations. So there, there are just so many variables here. And maybe the board isn't prepared tonight to give administration direction, but I think it's something that we all need to think about and can contact Dr. Cartwright individually on because that's not a conversation we can have outside of this boardroom in order to stay within the confines of the open meeting law. So I guess I'm suggesting at this time, unless somebody has a better idea, that if you have, whatever thoughts you have about moving forward, and it certainly could be things from up there or things that were presented in October, to share those with Dr. Cartwright so that we can move forward.
And I would humbly request that we please do that during an open board meeting so that I can ensure that I avoid walking worms.
That would be a good idea.
Thank you.
Wonderful idea. So let's, let's be prepared to see that on a future agenda item, whether that would be March 20th, although I think that's likely to be a full agenda because that's our annual board self-evaluation. More likely, it might be an April agenda item. But that, but be thinking about that because we do need to do more than just say, thank you for this report.
Right.
Although that's important. But where are we going to go from here? We don't want to just leave this and as Mrs. Carlin referred to, kick the can down the road. I think the time has come where, where some action needs to be taken.
Jim, do you have, so I know that we have next steps. Do you have like a timeframe for these? So these are the next steps that you have, you guys have kind of collectively put together that we should do. And I agree with Dr. Herzog that we should look at those, add to them, see how we feel, and then discuss those. Maybe that needs to be like the, the future agenda, like, look at the next steps and, and what those look like or what the timeline is or where, where, you know, I would like to wait to have that meeting when, after we get the results from this strategic plan to see where the community is at on this, too, to make sure, to see where they're aligning or not aligning or whatever it may be. That would be great. So back to my question, Jim, is, do you have timeframes on some of your next steps? Like, are we working on them? Is that what you're doing? Are you waiting for the guidance from us? Like, where are you guys on these next steps?
Well, I think collectively, when we left, it was exactly as you had said, we're waiting for the results for your next strategic plan.
Okay.
Should that strategic plan, and we believe it will, guide us toward at least one part of it, toward doing something with facilities. I think ultimately, we need to continue the conversation of what? What does that, what does that mean? And I think one of those steps will be developing a timeline to help come up with solutions. But I guess that's a discussion I need to have.
Yeah, and not, I know everyone gets uneasy when you talk about referendum, but that's kind of part of this, too, is you sort of look out and say, okay, what would, what would be a good, you know, if, again, I'm not saying we're going to referendum, but you, you kind of have to play it backwards from that and say, okay, well, if we, if we want to target the presidential 11, the presidential election, 2020, November of 2020, if that's a target, then we kind of work backwards from that. You sort of work back, when do we need to have a survey ready? When do we need to have the information for the survey? And, and that's typically what we would do in this process is sort of identify an endgame. And it doesn't mean that we have to go then, but at least we're working towards, you know, a date. And if we're not ready, then we just, you know, push it off longer. Obviously, this year, there's the, there's, we would not make it for April because you have to have your resolution 75 days. There's not a November election this year. So you'd probably be likely looking April of 2020 or November of 2020 at the very earliest. And I think there's, there's a lot of work to do. So I mean, are either of those realistic? I can't answer that question right now, but that's usually a good place to start is, you know, what's sort of the endgame and then kind of work back from that.
Is everything on this list?
Excuse me, one at a time, please, Mr. Evans.
Is everything on this list? Is that have to, everything have to be covered on the referendum, or is there things within budget that we can work on?
Well, there's a prioritization exercise, I think, we go through, too. Again, you know, what's, like, like was mentioned, I mean, the HVAC, there was, there was need there, right? Our boilers were on the very edge of, you know, of failing. So that there was, and so you, I think there's a prioritization that needs to happen in this process, too. There's probably a, an evaluation from a tax perspective of what's an achievable number from a referendum. I mean, if, you know, if we can, if we think the community will only support X amount of money, that we have to work towards that and what can we achieve? Maybe we have to look at, does this need to be phased over time, you know, so that there's, there's kind of a component of that. I think part of it, too, is just a master planning effort of where do we want to see the district in, again, whether that's 10 years, five years, 20 years? And then what are we doing to work towards that so that we're not building a classroom now to serve one need and then we find out, you know, five years from now, oh, we were, now we need to do something else in that spot. So we want to make sure we're working towards, I think, an end, some type of, type of an end goal, which again, is supportive of what we see in terms of trends for enrollment and any particular thing. So again, it's kind of weaving everything together.
And if I could, I just wanted to add, when this conversation began about a year and a half ago, one of the first things we had said is, although we have a 10-year facilities plan and we've documented some facilities problems, what we really wanted to do was to create a 20, 30, maybe 50-year plan for our district, something that'll live beyond the school board, this administration, something that future groups can pick up and understand what our vision was and how this district should grow. So as, as Bob had indicated, we don't want, or we'd want to create as few stranded investments as possible. And to Jim's point, this, we need to make sure that we don't lose track that this, if we go, or when potentially we go to a referendum, it is not a deferred maintenance referendum. We have done that in the past and we can do that, and that's more of a corrective mechanism. If we're really truly following a vision, maybe we do pick up on some deferred maintenance to help extend certain buildings' lives because as part of our whole value of process, at a strategic level, we decided that has value and we're going to get the life out of that value. Maybe this particular building that doesn't work, and I think that goes to your question, Kelly, about, you know, where do we go? And as, as we, as we get that direction from, from our strategic plan and from you as a board, we start evaluating buildings and starting to really get down into more detailed dollars as to what's viable, what's not viable, what's driven by educational value, what's driven by the actual brick and mortar itself. And all those variables come into play and help paint a much clearer picture of what our decision ought to be for all of our facilities. Does that make sense?
Absolutely, thank you.
You were going to weigh in on something that Mrs. Holmes said?
Jim just answered it. I was, I was, we jumped so far ahead where, for me, I was, there's so many more questions and so many more information I need before that I could ever feel comfortable making a decision, a decision about even thinking about referendum or going forward with that or anything else.
or anything else. This just, this is so skimming the surface. There's so much more that, so Jim absolutely answered it, going into more studies and looking at it and really what is the best for Oshkosh. And for all of us, I would say that the community and their input is invaluable. So, I really want to see those and where, I think that'll help guide us of where we need to go with this study and how further, which direction we need to go in with it.
Dr. Cartwright, do you have some sense of when the Oshkosh for Education group will be sharing the results of the strategic gathering?
Currently, the, my apologies.
I'm sorry.
Currently, the results are at University of Wisconsin, Oshkosh. And they're analyzing the results in order to give us a report back on that. Once we get those results, I anticipate that being back, if not at the end of this month, towards the beginning of next month.
Okay.
So, we're about a month out, I should say, from receiving those results. Once we receive the results candidly, well, at the administration team, we'll need a little bit of time to kind of dive into it so that we can give you executive summaries on the major, the main themes.
Right.
That are coming from that as well. So, I would anticipate probably, you know, for informational purposes, to come and provide you with information towards the second board meeting in April, thereabouts.
That seems like a reasonable timeline. But again, I would reiterate for my fellow board members to be thinking about all this and digesting this, gathering information from your respective groups and coming prepared for that meeting when we schedule this again as an agenda item for what direction we need to give to administration moving forward. Any other comments or questions from the board members, students? I want to thank the three of you for this presentation. You've given us a lot to think about as we move forward and think about the future of our students and the future of our community moving forward. So, thank you for all your hard work on this.
Yeah.
And I know we'll be having you back to the table. I look forward to that. Thank you. At this time, are there any requests for future agenda items? Other than this one? Are there any announcements?
I have one. Since that was kind of a serious workshop, I'm going to attempt to lighten the mood here a little bit. I hold in my hand the latest issue of the Wisconsin School News, which we all know is a publication from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. And the Oshkosh district was well represented in here. And this picture here, we have our board president and the Waspee delegation or delegate group photo. We have our resident technical pro, Dr. Gunlock, featured in the article.
Awesome.
And we have a rather bored-looking delegate at the delegate assembly. I think that is probably one that we were doing the second or third or fourth amendment that I was voting up or down on. But this is a recap of the convention. If we would have had this last week, we could have just handed this out to everybody and it could have. Let our workshop do it.
Thank you.
Mr. Evans, I haven't had a chance to look at my copy of that yet, but I appreciate your executive summary, Jim. And that leads into, with your professional development, we need to make sure that all board members complete the survey for the dates for the two nights we're looking for in the month of April. That, we're asking that you complete that by tomorrow so that we can schedule those professional development dates with our consultant, Mrs. Stinsky, on the key work of school boards. So, make sure you take care of that if you haven't already and I thank you for that. Dr. Cartwright?
I just have one quick announcement. I want to do a special recognition to our school social workers. This week is National School Social Worker Week, which serves to highlight the tremendous impact that our school social workers can have in helping students achieve student success. And in the Oshkosh area school district, we're very fortunate to have an outstanding group of school social workers who are very dedicated to our students, families and staff. And so, I just wanted to make sure I highlighted that and I read that directly from email that came from Mr. Kaitman that was sent out across the district.
Very nice. Thank you, Dr. Cartwright. Any other announcements? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for, one, considering the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises authority under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eighty-five point one, parent one, parent C, A, employee performance; and two, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session under Wisconsin statute nineteen eighty-five, nineteen point eighty-five, parent one, parent E, A, health insurance.
So, move.
Second, please call the roll.
Carlin.
Hi.
Carlin, hi. Ellison, Evans.
Aye.
Evans, I, Garner, Herzog.
Aye.
Herzog, aye.
Aye.
Evans, aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. Oops, sorry.